So if there's any glitches, it is being recorded and it'll be available on YouTube. You are okay to begin as if you were live again as of right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I will. I have asked, so we have a number of motions to be made. That's what Ingrid was just talking to. Do you want to make the motions? Ingrid? And again, anyone making a motion or a second, please say your name.
Okay, this is Ingrid. I move to extend Mark Gauss's employment contract as superintendent through 30 June 2026, with the next consideration for extension in December of 2021, with salary and benefits for this contract to be determined by the MDI RSS AOS 91 School Board.
Second, this is Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. I'll go through the voting list. Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Approved.
Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approve.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas.
Approved.
Christy LaSquadra.
Approved.
John Bench.
Thanks, Mark. I approve.
So Susan, I'm gonna skip you since Jim's here, jumping around. Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer. All right, going back to you, Susan. Oh, Jim, okay, thank you. Heidi Lawson. We might not have her back yet. If someone could text Heidi and let her know we're live again.
This is Jessica. I'll text her.
Thank you.
And I approve.
And thank you, Jessica. Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approve.
Aaron Brown.
Approved.
And Tammy Tripler.
I don't think it is with us, Heather.
Okay, thanks. Ingrid, I'll move on to the second round of motions.
Okay, I move to extend Julie Meltzer's employment contract as Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, Nancy Thurlow's employment contract as Business Manager, Melissa Beckwith.
Approved.
Wait, no, Melissa Beckwith. Okay, I don't know who keeps talking, but Melissa Beckwith's employment contract as Director of Special Services and Paige Collins' employment contract as Assistant Director of Special Education. All contracts extended until 30 June 2024, with the next consideration for extensions in December of 2021, with salary and benefits for this contract to be determined by the MDI RSS AOS 91 School Board.
Thank you, Ingrid. Is there a second?
Second.
This is Susan. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, I just said second. Kristy.
Okay. Thank you, Kristy. Thank you, Susan, for trying. Going through the list, Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Yes, approved, sorry.
Thank you. Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approved.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas.
Approved.
Christy LaSquadra.
Approved.
John Bench.
Approve.
Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer.
Approved.
Heidi Lawson.
Ding.
Jessica Stewart.
Approved.
Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approved.
And Aaron Brown.
Approved.
Thank you, everybody. And then we have our last two, the last motion for the last two people.
Okay, I move to extend Dan Reichovitz's employment contract as school psychologist and Stephanie Logue's employment contract as school psychologist specialist through 30 June 2022, with the next consideration for extension December of 2021, with salary and benefits for this contract to be determined by the MDI RSS AOS 91 School Board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, this is Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica. And Jessica's baby. Going through again, Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Approved.
Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approved.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas.
Approved.
Christy LaSquadra.
Approved.
John Bench.
Approve.
Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer.
Approved.
Heidi Lawson.
Aye.
Jessica Stewart.
Approved. Approved.
Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approved.
And Aaron Brown.
Approved.
Thank you, everybody, for that. The next, we have the consideration of the MDI, excuse me, Mount Desert Island Regional School System AOS 91 Budget for Fiscal Year 21.
Heather, may I?
Yes, please.
So we have made the adjustments as discussed with the board. And that was, we had had a placeholder of 10% in there for insurance. That was adjusted downward to 8%. Both Nancy and I felt we could support that number, so this draft budget reflects that. And we've also made that adjustment across the AOS member school budgets as well for health insurance. We also took asymptomatic testing out of the AOS budget and then migrated that to the local budgets. It essentially was awash in that respect. So from there, I will, with your permission, Heather, turn it over to Nancy to give any other updates or answer any other questions. Budget does still, does reflect the operations position. That is still in the budget for an additional item. There are no other items added to this budget other than what we've discussed to date.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Nancy, do you have anything to add to this? Is Nancy here?
She was, hang on.
Yeah, yep.
This is the only, I don't see her on, Heather, and just, just a quick piece. I'm asked to remind that this is fiscal year 22, not 21. We're in 21 now.
It's 21, 22, right?
It is for that year, but it technically is fiscal year 22, but yes, you're correct. I don't, I don't see Nancy here, and I can take any questions. I have the budget in front of me if they're in.
Okay. Do we have any questions? And if you have a question, please unmute, say your name. Hearing no questions. Are we ready to take this for a vote? If someone wants to make a motion, I will go there.
Aye, so moved.
Mark, do we have to be a little bit more specific as far as that number?
Please. If I might suggest, Heather, the number that you would, if it squeezes the board, the number would be $2,241,524. That includes the additional items. And so that is a 5.9% increase in the aggregate.
Yeah.
Kate, do you have any interest in making a motion?
I move that we pass or approve the budget as presented in the amount of $2 million. This is from memory. I don't have it right in front of me. $271,200.
Nope, nope. Hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause. There's somebody who's on the phone. If they could please mute themselves, that would be very helpful.
Kate, if the number is $2,241,524.
Let's start from the beginning here.
Thank you, Kate.
I move that we approve the budget as presented in the amount of $2,241,524 for the fiscal year of 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Susan, second.
All right. Thank you. All right. I will go through the list again.
Heather, it's Heidi.
Hi, Heidi.
Um, have, so is this the first time we've seen the complete, the complete audited budget? Or I missed last month's meeting. Did we have a complete audited budget last month?
Oh, yes, is the short answer. Heidi, do we have the audit report? Is that, is that the question?
No, so this is not the first time we've seen the full budget.
That, that is correct, Heidi. This is not the first time.
This is probably the third time.
That's my collection.
Yep. Yeah. And this budget is, there's a downward shift in it from the past two that we've seen as far as lowering the health insurance percentage and taking out the asymptomatic testing and spreading that across the schools.
That's correct, Heather. I believe this is the third time we've reviewed.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Heidi?
This is Kristy. Just one more question. And I know the answer to this, Mark, but so if the health insurance comes back as a zero and next month or next week, whenever we vote on this budget, it's locked in, all that money would, that 8% would go to carryover for next year, correct?
Absolutely. We cannot spend it on anything. It would go to carry forward. That is correct.
Thank you, Kristy. Any other questions? All right, I'll take this to a vote. Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Approved.
Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approved.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas.
Approved.
Christy LaSquadra.
Approved.
John Bench.
Approved.
Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer.
Approved.
Heidi Lawson.
Approved.
Jessica Bass.
I don't think she's on the meeting. This is Jessica Stewart, and I approve.
I'm really sorry about that, Jessica. I meant Jessica Stewart. Thank you. Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approved.
And Aaron Brown.
Approved.
All right. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mark and Nancy, for all of your work on this budget.
Thank you, Heather.
And then the next is approval, approval to set the date and time of the annual budget meeting. And that budget, that the suggested time is Monday, February 1st.
That's correct, Heather. Yes, I would recommend that date and the time to be 6:00 PM. And if I may, we're working out how we're going to navigate this meeting, location, parameters. It needs to be a public meeting, so that'll be a focus for Nancy and I in the next week or so and be able to report. But that is the recommended date and time for the annual meeting, budget meeting, rather, excuse me.
And we need to, hold on, Ingrid. Mark, we need to approve this.
Correct, because we'll need to be able to post the warrant. So yes, the board does need to vote a date and time, please.
Ingrid.
So do we all have to physically sign? Or is that a DocuSign situation? I remember last spring, we all had to sign something.
I believe it's, it's physical, Ingrid, and we will facilitate that. We'll make sure that we bring that to board members. Nobody will have to be inconvenienced. We'll, we'll, we'll take it right to you folks.
Well, let's talk about that too, Mark. I mean, I think there's probably some of us who don't have a problem swinging by the school and signing. All right, so the recommendation is Monday, February 1st of 2021 at 6:00 PM, and the details of location and how it will be done will be conveyed.
So moved, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi. Is there a second?
Second, Ingrid.
Thank you, Ingrid. Any questions, comments? I'll go through the list. Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Approved.
Thank you. Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approved.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas.
Approved.
Christy LaSquadra.
Approved.
John Bench.
Approved.
Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer.
Approved.
Heidi Lawson.
Approved.
Jessica Stewart.
Approved.
Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approved.
And Aaron Brown.
Approved.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Heather, this is Kristy.
Yep.
I just had a comment. I think that February 1st is a Bar Harbor School Board meeting scheduled for 4:30, which, if we're all online, it shouldn't be a conflict, but I just, I didn't know if Mark might need to move up that Bar Harbor meeting to be sure. You know, we could move it to 4 o'clock if that might be easier for him to make sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Kristy.
Okay.
I'll work it out with Barb and Selena.
Thank you, Kristy. Okay, other business. Mark, I will turn that to you.
Yes, thank you, Heather. So with your permission, I'd like to give an update on our status. As the board knows and community knows, we're presently remote. So I try to give a quick overview of the decision-making, where we're at and where we are at as of today and where we hope to be a week from now. If folks don't know, prior to us going remote, I was contacted by the hospital. They reached out to me, and I really appreciate that, the support of Chrissy McGuire, the CEO, and her staff. I believe their efforts helped us be, or I know helped us be very proactive and limit community spread. And as a result of their contact and recommendations and support and networking with the administrative team and the board chairs, we did come to the decision. I came to the decision to move remotely. And I just, again, want to underscore, I know that's difficult for our students and families, but our first and foremost concern was around health and safety, and it remains so. So we appreciate everybody being, being patient with us. That move, I believe, in checking with the hospital has paid dividends. And I believe one of the indicators the board and the community should know is that we continue with our Sentinel testing program of employees. Last week, the results yielded no positive cases of employees. That's good news. Tomorrow, we'll, we'll complete our second round of Sentinel testing or this week's round. We should have the results, I hope, by Wednesday. And so that information coupled with meeting with the administrative team tomorrow, meeting with the nurses on Wednesday, meeting with the hospital. I believe, all things being equal, we're projected, I believe, to return back to school on the day following Martin Luther King Day, which would be Tuesday, the 19th. That, that's where we stand now. Obviously, this could change on a dime. This could change overnight. But if the data continues to trend the way it is trending now, we would expect to return to hybrid remote next Tuesday. I do want to emphasize, it is very, very important. COVID is, is all around us, and the work that the community is doing is making a difference. And so the things that we do outside of school really, really determine whether we can be in school. And I have to underscore that as often as I can. So we need the help of our community. We want our students in school. We want our schools open. They are open, but we want to be in person. And so I believe that's a 10,000-foot view of where we're at, Heather, and I'll take any questions that you or members of the board may have.
This is Jessica. Not a question.
I would just add one thing, Jessica, that, excuse me, that I would hope that by Wednesday I could at a minimum update the board chairs and then make a decision by Wednesday afternoon for families and staff. Sorry.
Jessica.
Is the YouTube link working? I'm getting a text from a couple people who are trying to watch, and they aren't, and it's not working for them.
If we are having any technical difficulties, I can tell you in talking with Josh, this is being recorded, and it will be available after the meeting if anybody's having any connection problems. I apologize if that's the case.
I have a question for Heidi, sorry.
Yep.
So all extracurricular activities, no matter what they are, theater, music, or do they all start back Tuesday as well? Or will there be a rollout on those programs?
Great question, Heidi, and I should have mentioned that, but if we're back in school, our, our plan, and we're following our framework and our operational procedures. And so the short answer is yes. If we return to school and the conditions allow us to be in-person hybrid, then we would resume our programming through the schools. And that would be from middle level through the high school. We'll also receive a color code designation update from CDC and MDOE. But we probably, we won't have that information until the latter part of the week. But that's another indicator, but not the sole determinant. The determination is always a local determinant.
Are there other questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. It's Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
Mark, do we have an update on, I know it's fantastic that the Sentinel testing for our staff has all come back negative, but do we have an update on some of the students that we know about in the different communities that have tested positive, where they are vis-à-vis their quarantine times? And, and if there are other related people from those that we know of that are still quarantining?
So another great question, Carrie, and this is an opportunity, again, to educate, you know, the community and our partners. So the short answer is that we're, our families have been great, staying in touch with the administrators and our nurses. You know, we've been out of school for some time now, and so if there is any contact tracing that's done or positive cases that have been identified or reported, they haven't been directly through the schools because we've been out of school. So they've been through the hospital. The good news is that we have great partnership with the hospital. We communicate with them regularly. But it's important to underscore that for confidentiality purposes and reporting purposes, it's not the school's domain. We, we don't get involved in doing the contact tracing. We don't get involved in requesting information. It really is by the good nature of individuals coming to us and saying, "I've tested positive," or "I have this family member," and reporting that to the principals and our nurses. Now, that would change if we were in school. If we were in school, then we would work it through the schools. So in short, the reports I'm getting from the hospital is that it's encouraging because they believe that we've, we've been able to mitigate the spread or at least contain it and that folks are doing the right things by quarantining and following the directions of our healthcare professionals. Does that answer your question, Heidi, Carrie?
Yes, it does. And I assume that whatever communication you send out, it's going to include information about people who are still being told to quarantine by CDC.
Yes.
Being out of school. So I know you'll handle that, that well. I just was wondering where we were at. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Are there any other questions? Okay, under other business, also, there was the comment or suggestion that either the board chairs or we, the district, write a letter to the editor or to the paper in support of Mark with respect to the vote of no confidence that came out of the Trenton Advisory, School Advisory Group. And if people want to discuss this here, that's fine. I'm happy to have comments about that. There's also probably a few of us that could sit down and draft this. You know, I'd like to hear from sort of Jennifer and Mike Zabore to make sure that doing such isn't going to put them in a different, in a difficult position.
I'd be happy to start.
Who is this?
Oh, it's Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
No, you know, I, I don't see any issue with the AOS board, you know, making a statement based on the comments that were put on paper by the S E O C. I think, you know, that would be a reasonable thing. I know that staff has also written a letter that will be read at our board meeting tomorrow.
Okay. That's great to hear. Thank you. All right. Well, I think there's probably some of us that are very good at writing, and we can take a stab at that. And I'll put something forth to the board chairs and, and work with Jennifer on that, too, if that's the will of the board. Mark, is there any other business?
I, I don't have anything, Heather, and, no, the only thing we have is the executive session as soon as the board's done.
Yes, so for future agenda, we just have the middle school topic. Is there anything else?
Yes, this is Julie. There's two other topics that I've been asked to present on, one being the Anti-Racism Task Force and District Activities.
Okay.
Happy to present on that in one of the next two meetings. And also, I was asked to present on the Virtual Academy Semester One, just the status of K7 and costs and participation and numbers and all of that to the board. I'm happy to do that as well.
Thank you, Julie. Okay. Anything else?
I just want to apologize that the board didn't get a piece of cake during the annual meeting. I'll make it up to you twofold next year, I promise.
Two slices or four slices, since we usually.
It'll be special, I guarantee it.
All right. All right, hearing nothing else, our next meeting is Monday, February 1st, 2021. It's the annual public budget meeting at 6:00 PM, and details about the structure of that will be forthcoming. So hearing nothing else, I will take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA subsection 4056D contract negotiations.
So moved.
Show me a Coke.
All right, so let's, let's have a name and a motion.
I so moved, Lili.
Thank you, Lili. Second? Who was the second?
Second, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, I'll go through the voting list. Heather Jones, approve. Susan McCready.
Approved.
Kate Chaplin.
Approved.
Dwayne Bolt.
Approved.
Robin Sue Tapley.
Approved.
Lili Simas. Lili Semus.
Approved.
Kristela Squadro.
Approved.
John Bench.
Approve.
Ingrid Cashmar.
Approved.
Jim Sawyer.
Approved.
Heidi Lawson.
Approved.
Heidi, will you be able to be a part of this?
I am going to step away again.
Okay.
I'll be in contact with you, Heather.
Yep, yep. Jessica Stewart.
Approved.
And Carrie Hayes.
Approved.
Gary Burr.
Approved.
Tom Reeve.
Approved.
Aaron Brown.
Approve.
Okay. So thank you, everybody. We'll go into executive session. We'll just wait a few minutes for everybody to depart and to have the.